I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to start this meeting with two public hearings. We'll do the first public hearing to discuss the 2017 Small Cities Program application and to solicit citizen input for renovation and repair property owned by the Simsbury Housing Authority. We'll give folks five minutes to speak and go through everyone until everyone has a chance, and then if people want to speak again, they can speak for an additional five minutes, but we're limiting the subject to the hearing matter. So with that, we will -- did you want to?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Nancy Wagner from L. Wagner and Associates. I'm the grant administrator for the town of Simsbury. The town of Simsbury is proposing to submit a 2017 Small Cities Grant application to the Department of Housing for Phase Two renovations and improvements at Virginia Connolly Residence and Dr. Owen L. Murphy Apartments. The town currently has a 2015 grant, which they received for roof replacement and site improvements. They did sidewalks, walkways, paving at the same complex. This work is approximately 90 percent complete. They expect to be, fingers crossed, done within the next couple of months, depending on the weather. They have some final punch list items, landscaping and seeding, and hopefully that'll be done soon. The current grant does not generate any program income. The proposed 2017 grant will include various items, which I'm going to turn it over to Ed, that he can go in a little bit more detail about it.
Thank you.
Okay, Nancy. Ed Lamontagne, Executive Director, Simsbury Housing Authority. As Nancy had mentioned, we are applying for the 2017 Small Cities Grant, the purpose of which at the Virginia Connolly is to fund Phase Two, which is a continuation of the roadway sidewalk improvements into VCR. As Nancy mentioned, last year, we did the Dr. Owen L. Murphy Apartments. The intent, again, in this case, is to repave, restrike the existing roadway, install concrete sidewalks with curb cuts, which currently do not meet ADA standards. Going to include additional handicap parking spaces. We're going to -- our intent is to get a new generator. Our current generator is beyond its useful life, and as you know, Virginia Connolly Residence is a secondary shelter for the town. In fact, I got a call from Mickey today, and preparation for tomorrow's storm is to prepare our facility in case we need to utilize it, so I'm hoping the generator has one more life to give. And in addition, we are looking to purchase an underground oil tank. We have a 6,000-gallon oil tank, which stores our number-two heating oil. The state regulation is to remove it at the 30-year mark. We are on year 29. At the Owen L. Murphy Apartments, we're looking to replace the front and rear storm doors for each of the apartments. Current ones are about 10 years old. They're starting to have mold issues, as well as not being energy efficient. Interestingly, the Trump administration is considering a $6 billion cut to HUD, to the HUD budget. Of that, $3 billion is allocated for the Small Cities Grant program and is preliminary proposed to be cut entirely, so needless to say, this might be our last opportunity to apply. I do want to take the opportunity to thank the town employees, especially Tom, for their assistance with this application, as you know it's a very lengthy, arduous application, and the support of the members from the town have been excellent, so I appreciate that assistance as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone who would like to speak for or against the application of the Small Seeing none, I'll take a motion to close the Small Cities Application, hearing, soliciting input for renovation and repair of the property owned by Simsbury Housing Authority.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. That hearing is closed. We will now begin the hearing to receive public comment concerning a proposal to adopt a new Chapter 157 on water shortages. I believe that Mr. Rieger from the Conservation Commission is just going to give us a very quick update on changes that were made in response to the Board of Selectmen comments the last time we had a hearing. If you could, to the extent, you know, quick summary and those quick changes.
Okay. Just a little background. Donald Rieger, 9 Stodmore, wrote, "I'm the Secretary of the Conservation Commission and speaking on his behalf this evening to recommend the ordinance to you. The reason for a town ordinance can be found in the Connecticut Drought Preparedness and Response Plan." And it says, legislation passed, it says, "The state can enforce water restrictions only when the drought is at an emergency stage. Therefore, municipal authority is necessary to enforce local drought response at earlier stages." Goes on to say, "Legislation passed in 2014 encourages municipalities to adopt a water use restriction ordinance," parenthetically, Representative Hampton sponsored that legislation. "In municipalities that have private wells, the ordinance should also include homeowner responsibility." Why the emphasis on wells? The state plan acknowledges the difficulty in making statewide judgments about what are essentially local conditions. It cites as a major concern the inability to accurately assess the status of public water supplies and the lack of readily available ways to assess the status of groundwater systems. And Simsbury is entirely a groundwater system. Even our water company water is all well water. If one has a private well, it's natural to think of the water as coming out of, from under one's own land, but in fact, it's from a shared aquifer, and one's use of a well can affect one's neighbor's water supply. So the town needs a toolkit to deal with water shortages before an emergency arises. The draft ordinance is pretty straightforward, as we've worked on it with the town council and in response to the Board's earlier comments. When the Board of Selectmen studies conditions and finds that the adequacy of the town water supply is threatened, it may adopt a drought management plan. That plan does not impose any restrictions. It is merely the Board's way of organizing how it will deal with the problem, which town staff will talk to the water companies, how recommendations will be made to the Board, and so forth. If on further study and consultation, the Board finds that water supplies are in danger of reaching levels insufficient to provide for public health, sanitation, safety, and so forth, the ordinance, what the ordinance calls a water shortage, it may impose restrictions on water company customers. If on further study and consultation, the Board of Selectmen finds that underground water supplies are in danger of reaching levels insufficient to provide for public health, sanitation, and safety, and so forth, what the ordinance calls a state of groundwater depletion, it may impose the same sorts of restrictions on water from wells. The sorts of restrictions are the same sort we're accustomed to hearing from the water companies, watering lawns, washing cars, that sort of thing. The Board may not go beyond the restrictions listed in the ordinance without having a specific public hearing to enlarge the list. The ordinance provides for exceptions in case of hardship and for penalties for persons who don't comply. Why might we need restrictions? In one Connecticut town, it was found that in the water, in the lawn watering season, average daily consumption increased by 50 percent, and the increase was seen to go as high as 160 percent in times of hot, dry weather and drought. Water companies can request that their customers limit watering, but they have no power of enforcement, especially on private wells. The draft ordinance is patterned on the one that has been in use in Greenwich for a few years. That town has had a very serious water shortage problem in the last couple of years, and the ordinance has worked very well for them. The Conservation Commission strongly recommends adoption of the draft ordinance. I'd be pleased to respond to questions.
Okay, well, we'll open it up to things. I just want to see if Bob had anything you wanted to add to that.
No. I worked with the Conservation Commission after the Board of Selectmen's request, and the draft that you presented got commissioned to be unanimous.
Okay, thank you. We'll open it up to public comment, and we'll go again, five minutes, and then if you don't get through what you say, you can come back and finish after everyone's had a chance. I see Representative Hampton will begin with.
Thank you so much for allowing me the opportunity to speak on behalf of the proposed water shortage ordinance. My name is John Hampton, 9 Noel Lane, Weetok. I am Simsbury State Representative. Although Connecticut has excellent clean water standards and regulations, it is necessary that we continue to do so to conserve water for the town of Simsbury every day, but especially when extreme situations warrant it. One of my top priorities as a state representative has been water conservation and water planning. In 2014, I was involved with convening the first-ever Connecticut Water Summit, which brought together major stakeholders to address this vital issue. It included legislators from both sides of the aisle, state agencies, environmental groups, academics, business leaders, and water providers, and of course, the Riegers. Then in 2016, I helped lead the passage of, 2014, I helped lead the passage of Public Act 16137, an act concerning statewide water plan, which was a major step towards forming a comprehensive and dynamic statewide water strategic plan for the protection of our state's water supply. This is why I'm so proud that we, as a town, are taking steps to have responsible water conservation measures in place to help protect our water supply. I'm in full support of this ordinance to impose water restriction in events where there is a water shortage, a state of groundwater depletion, or state water use restrictions, or a declaration of a public drinking water supply emergency issued by the Department of Public Health. I'm also in support of giving the Board of Selectmen the authority to adopt a drought management plan to cover all matters of water conservation. A clean, safe, and reliable source of water is one of our most precious and vital natural resources. We need only look at some of the unfortunate events across our nation, including Flint, Michigan, to realize this. Again, thank you again for this opportunity to provide testimony in support of this ordinance, which I'm hopeful will go a long way towards managing water resources in a responsible manner and protect our water supply for future generations. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? We'll go from left to right. Ms. Coe?
Joan Coe, 26 Whitcomb Drive. It appears that we now have two different drafts of water shortage ordinance, one legal notice for a public hearing for water shortage ordinance, and another draft ordinance similar to the state model. And we have this, which is proposed, and this is the state draft. Why adopt, why another draft to the agenda? Why not adopt the state ordinance model that is compliant with all state mandates? It appears that the public hearing for a water shortage ordinance is premature. According to my information, the town of Simsbury has a huge supply of water in the town aquifers that provides an infinite supply of water. It appears to me that we are solving a problem that does not exist. However, the state has written a six-page, and here it is, the six-page model for towns to use to enforce limitations on water consumption during emergencies. Why has our town decided to formulate an original ordinance when the state has already supplied the acceptable model? The state model defining restrictions of water use are under state agencies, under the town ordinance. It includes Board of Selectmen, Director of Public Works, the Farmington Valley Health District, and the water company. Why the difference? Why have some restrictions and enforcement deviated from the state model? Why has the Board of Selectmen been given the authority to oversee the ordinance as opposed to a town manager or designate as a first line of communication? Under the state model, restriction Section 5-oe, other outdoor uses include private wells that use water that is wasteful, is prohibited. Why the omission in the town ordinance that you have here for, as part of your public hearing? The state model, under Section 9-oe, enforcement and penalty defines who should impose the penalties. The town ordinance omits this reference. Why? Under the state model definition, Section 11-oe exemptions, application for a waiver. Under the town ordinance, this is omitted. Why? Where is the section for an agency to address citizen complaints? Why has the town initiated their own ordinance when one from the state was already established with all the guidance established under state statutes? Why is the town reinventing the wheel? It appears to me that the quote "noticed ordinance" end quote does not fully address the issues of notification and compliance that should be withdrawn until the town can review the state model that is compliant with all issues the state addresses. As I was told by a state officer, many towns have used their model and tweaked it to conform to the town's policies. Our town should do the same. I would like to have the Board of Selectmen withdraw the noticed ordinance and make changes specific to town policies. Since there is no imminent shortage of water, there is time to do a thorough review of the ordinance and develop an acceptable policy. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Mr. Rieger. Mr. Rieger, just to identify, you'll be speaking on your own behalf?
I can speak on my own behalf if you'd like. The model ordinance that is, was cited is included as part of the Connecticut Drought Preparedness and Response Plan, which I referenced. If you read the whole document, this is just an excerpt, it's quite a long document, the framers of that plan say that they've offered the one possible model ordinance. They say that they regret they didn't have the resources they needed to do as many different models as they should have done. They acknowledge that this does, is not a one-size-fits-all model, and in fact, this only deals with water company water. So from the outset, it fails to address a critical point for Simsbury and a critical point from the point of view of the framers of the state plan. Also, so, in fact, there is not a state model that fits our case very well. Another aspect of the plan that is offered to you is that, if you will, it's more conservative than the state plan, because it gives the Board of Selectmen a finite list of possible restrictions that it may use. If the Board wishes to go beyond that, it must have a new public hearing and a sharing with the public. This model has a wide-open list. It offers possible restrictions as examples, but leaves quite wide open what the Board of Selectmen might do. So what's before you is better tailored to the town because it covers wells and more conservative because it better limits the scope of discretion given to the Board.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak, going from left to right? Coming back, we'll go to Mr. Balboni.
My name is David C. Balboni, 13 Foxton Road, West Simsbury. I came into town in 1955, and they had a lot of water come down that hill, because you know, we had the great flood. And the reason I'm here is to give some information on how the town ended up with three water companies. We know we have the water company up in Tarahiffle. We know that Avon Water Supplies some water down on Route 10 to Simsbury people, and then we have Aquarian. Now, about 20 years ago, we had the Village Water Company, and I was very happy to be the chairman of the board of that company for about 12 or 14 years. Due to many regulations and the inability to get rates up sufficiently to supply the funds, we were forced into selling the water company, which we did. And now, it was a very contentious issue in the town at that time. Not too many people were here when it happened. But when the DPUC came in to have the public hearing on it, on whether they were going to allow us to sell it, we must have had 300 or 400 people come to Enamemori. The fire district wanted to buy it desperately from the town, and they mashed all the troops on it. Ultimately, we already under contract, so we proceeded, and the DPUC gave us permission, and we sold it to Bridgeport Hydraulic. Now, Bridgeport Hydraulic was later acquired by a British company, and then it was sold to an outfit in Australia. And now we have Aquarian, which I guess is, I'm not sure who owns Aquarian now. I guess it's, I don't know who owns it. But anyway, the company has, over the years, it's been about 20 years roughly, has done an outstanding job in my idea of how it should perform. Some of the questions that come up in this proposed ordinance are, first, how many people are on well water? Were they on the well? They have their own maintenance and upkeep, et cetera? We have Avon Water with a little bit, and we have Tarahiffle. I tried to find out about what, how many people are on well water, and the best I could learn from our people in town was maybe 20 percent of the well water, town well water by the people. They are responsible, as we all know, for what happens to their wells and take care of them. They basically are on what's called groundwater. They don't dip into the aquifers. Most of these aquifers are four, 500 feet deep. They are immense. And back in 1972, we had the Corps of Engineers come up, and they profiled the biggest aquifer we have in town, and they sunk 40 holes all around to see the size of that aquifer and where it's located. And for your information, it runs basically down where the high school is, all the way up to the Tuller Farm, and then over through town forest. And when they did their analysis of the data from these four profile wells, at that time, they found that it was the largest defined aquifer in the state of Connecticut. Enough water there probably to take care of Manhattan. So with that as a background, I see no point in worrying about our aquifer problem. The question about the people that are on their own wells, that's kind of their own business unless the town is going to try to usurp them. So I guess my summary would be, I see no reason for this ordinance at all, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have it. So my recommendation is, we got enough government, dump this one.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Is there anyone? We don't take questions from speakers, but thank you. You can do so after the meeting. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Are there any other speakers for or against the ordinance? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing to receive comment concerning a proposal to adopt a new Chapter 157 water shortages.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. De Crescendo, do you have anything to add after public audience? Anything you heard that you'd like to address?
No, I don't think so. Only that the Conservation Commission did refer and incorporate some aspects of the state model ordinance referred to by one of the speakers into the draft.
Thank you. We're going to go on, then, to regular public audience, where members of, do we need to vote? Okay. We have a motion and a, all in favor to close the public hearing?
Aye.
Okay, the hearing is closed.
Lisa, could I make an order, point of order, to amend, a motion to amend the agenda to include appointments and resignations at the end of the agenda?
Yes.
Or would you like?
Could you go through, list the ones, yeah?
To accept the resignation of Derek Peterson from zoning, to appoint Michael Doyle as a regular member of zoning, to appoint Evelyn Golden to EDC, to appoint Maura Fitzgerald Matia to EDC, to appoint Mark Brady to EDC, and to add an executive session pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes 1-200 sub-6 sub-D concerning the selection of a site lease or sale or purchase of real estate in connection with the redesign of the senior center.
Thank you. I'll second that change. Whatever Cheryl said. Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion is amended. We'll begin with public audience, as we always do. By rules of the Board of Selectmen, each member of the public is invited to come up and speak for five minutes. If you feel that you need more time, you can reach any of us after the meeting or at a different time. We're happy to hear more. As Chair, it's my job to run the meeting according to the rules adopted by the Board of Selectmen. Does anyone have any desire to change the rules of the Board of Selectmen? Seeing none, we'll begin with public audience for five minutes. We'll go again from left to right and start with Ed Lamontagne.
Good evening again. Ed Lamontagne, 4 George Street, Executive Director, Simsbury Housing Authority, and Chairman of the Thomas Simsbury Aging and Disability Commission. I'd like to speak in favor of the Simsbury Volunteer Ambulance's request for a subsidy towards its operating budget. Their assistance to seniors and persons with disabilities in the town is immeasurable. I have worked closely with the EMS staff on numerous occasions, found them to be very caring, knowledgeable, and professional. It's well documented that the number of seniors in town will increase dramatically over the next five to 10 years, and many of those seniors will be aging in place in their own homes. The inclusion of additional assisted living facilities and special need housing only demonstrates the need for additional response capability to meet the potential increase in cold volume. I would therefore like to offer my support of the intent I have before you to provide a subsidy of $80,000 towards the Simsbury Volunteer Ambulance.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Ms. Coe?
Joan Coe, 26 Whitcomb Drive. On Wednesday, March 8th, at about 11:00 a.m., I was in Town Hall having a conversation with a greeter at the entrance. Jamie Rabbit, the town planner, interrupted my conversation to berate me for talking to his staff during working hours and trying to communicate with him. Jamie told me he could talk to a judge about my interruptions with him and his staff. Jamie stated that he would ask his staff to communicate with the judge on my interaction with his staff. With the increase in development in the town and the change in the character of Simsbury forever, I check with the professional staff with their expert advice when I have concerns about various developments and compliance in town. Both the zoning enforcement official and the assistant town planner are professionals with years of experience and have a wealth of knowledge. They have both encouraged me to share my concerns and get expert advice into my inquiries with them. Jamie Rabbit told me that he would tell the judge that I could not interact with him because he cannot be distracted with questions, as it would take him a while to gather his thoughts to continue his work. If Jamie Rabbit has a judge in his pocket, I would like to know who this judge is and when he expects to institute a lawsuit under the direction of this unknown judge. According to an article in the Hartford Current, quote, "Simsbury hires James Rabbit as a director of planning at states," and I quote, "Rabbit has a bachelor's degree in accounting and to graduate courses in community planning and area development," end quote. He worked for Southern Connecticut Council of Governments in Norwich with a parting salary of $72,000. There was an article in the Bulletin, September 23rd, 2015, quote, "Prompt for town planner banned from working for town until he gets insurance," end quote. Jamie Rabbit was hired as town planner, Simsbury's town planner, November 2015 with a starting salary of $112,750 and presently has a salary of $115,569. However, his professional staff is capable of interacting with the public and performing their workload. A highly-paid professional public employee should be able to find time to interact with the public. The taxpayers who pay his salary is not the enemy. Recently, the town has hired Great Blue to implement a survey, asking residents about their interaction with the town. I received a call from the consultant and was told after asking me my age that I could not participate in the survey because my age group was complete. I would like to know, is this survey a random sample of residents or targeted to certain age groups? Recently, Hartford Mayor Luke Bronin had a town meeting with residents in Simsbury in the library asking for funding. At that time, along with other concerns, I asked him why he did not ask the insurance companies to increase their revenue with the city, since they would be the recipient of a vibrant community. At that time, he responded by saying, "Don't you think I asked them?" I stated he should ask them again. A recent article in the Hartford Current stated that, quote, "CEOs donate $50 million to the city." I guess he took my advice. The town of West Hartford is presently looking for a town manager and has developed a brochure on their website that gives the background history of West Hartford former government, ideal candidates, qualifications, applications, and selection process, compensation, organizational chart, and timeline for replacement for their town manager. This is a very valuable document and should be used as a guide in Simsbury's search for town manager. I recently asked Social Services to give me the number of people who use services for the needy of Simsbury. These numbers are for 2016. Food, 7,327 people. Energy assistance, 209 families. Total client contact, 7,169 people. The services are offset with donations of $112,946. Everyone should realize there are families in Simsbury in need. The need will increase as Meth Lab, Mass Mutual, and the Hartford Financial Services are reducing middle management employees. All insurance companies in Connecticut are on the radar for mergers and acquisitions if their profitability declines. Where are all these families going to live when they can no longer meet their financial obligations without employment opportunities? I would also encourage this Board to place SCTV in the basement of the library and move the friends of the library materials to the bed. the friends of the library materials to the Betty Hudson property which is vacant. This will make room at Eno Hall with a 1,600 square feet of usable space for the seniors. Why is the town required to pay for a tent at September Fest when we paid $15,000 for Dave Ryan's golf cart? And will there be an entry fee for this event? And all my comments will be on Simsbury Patch, news feed at Facebook, Twitter at Joan Coe, and Simsbury forum topics. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Coe. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at public audience? Okay. Seeing none, we'll go on to, um... Presentation. Actually, I don't believe we have any. No, because we just did the hearing, so we're actually okay. So now, really, it's Sean's favorite. The First Selectwoman's Report. I won't go through everything. I do want to let folks know that the Governor has instituted a travel ban beginning at 5:00 a.m. tomorrow, so we are encouraging folks to stay off the roads. Town Hall and Library, Simsbury Farms will be closed tomorrow except for emergency services and of course DPW, who are, all of whom are working very hard, including our Ambulance Association, to get us ready for the storm tomorrow. But we do encourage people, please, please, if you can, stay off the roads. Just a couple of quick updates. March 21st, the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Education now will be presenting their budgets to the Board of Finance. The Board of Education was supposed to present tomorrow night. They are not going to be able to do that. So I do want to let folks know that. On March 29th, Sean Kimball and I will be giving a Citizens' Guide to the Budget presentation at the library to talk about the budget process, where you can find budget information and to answer any questions you may have about the current budget. So encourage folks to attend if you have an interest in that. The Simsbury Mini Maker Fair will be held on April 1st from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Simsbury Library and this is going to be awesome. And I encourage everyone to join us for the greatest show and tell on earth. Simsbury's Mini Maker Fair is part science fair, part county fair, technology expo, and part something entirely new. As a celebration of the maker movement, it's a family-friendly showcase of invention, creativity, and resourcefulness. It is free, but we do encourage people to sign up in advance and get a ticket. The library will also have other activities going on throughout the day, including 3D printer demonstrations and cricket training at the Innovators Workshop and Minecraft in the computer lab. I don't know what half those things are, but they are very awesome, I understand. The future of our forests stewarding our lands thoughtfully. I want to let members of this board know that there will be a forum coming up and I think we have omitted the date, so we'll go ahead and add the date, but it's April 17th. Is there, yes. At 7, uh, at 6:00 p.m. at the library. And this will be a forum with Dr. Edward Faison, who's a senior ecologist from Highstead, who will talk about stewarding our forests through the long term, both municipal and nonprofit forests. So it should be an interesting thing. We are asking for your help to help Simsbury earn a National Places for Vikes five-star rating. There is a survey out there that we need everyone to complete and help us get that rating. We're a little competitive out there, so let's do this, guys. Summer camp registration has begun. You can sign up for camps there and new camps will be coming online periodically over the next few months and you can do that at Simsburyrec.com, so we encourage folks to do that. The Department of Public Health is recommending that now is the time to test for radon and there are free radon testing kits available at the Farmington Valley Health District and 95 River Road in Canton and you can stop by or call them to get your free test kit while they're available and we encourage folks to do that. Movies at the Simsbury Public Library. Did you know we offer free movies on Fridays at 1:00? You will notice a theme this month, Green Lantern on March 17th and Green Fingers on March 24th. If you want to come, those are free and open to everyone and we encourage folks to do that. The Simsbury Triathlon has announced their date and that's going to be Sunday, May 21st. At 11:00 a.m., you can sign up at triesimsbury.com. The Talcott Mountain Music Festival at Simsbury Meadows Performing Arts Center has announced their lineup. I don't think tickets are for sale yet, but it's an exciting lineup, including Celebrate America, Sergeant Pepper's 50th, The Music of David Bowie, Williams and the Warner Brothers, and Broadway A to Z. So we're excited to welcome them back and looking forward to those performances. I'll let folks know that help with taxes remains available, as does energy assistance and revaluation is still going on throughout Simsbury. And even though it is winter, there is still a drought watch in effect for the Hartford District, so I encourage folks to do what they can. A couple of economic development points. Congratulations to two Simsbury chefs who have been named James Beard semifinalists. They're Tyler Anderson at Millwright's and Jeff Lizotte, a present company. We're very excited to have them both in Simsbury. I encourage folks to check out their restaurants because they are awesome. The Economic Development Implementation and Strategic Activities Report is online. You can look at the link for that. Simsbury Public Library is partnering with the Tourism Committee to offer promoting your organizations, programs for nonprofits, and the first one will be March 21st. Utilize the Connecticut Office of Tourism website from 2:30 to 4:00, so you can do that and then come to the Board of Finance that evening and it will be a fun-packed day for you if you do that. Wednesday night is Business Night at the Library continues. Taking care of your prime real estate offers a hands-on program to help with organizational issues that keep you from reaching your goals and that will be Wednesday, March 22nd. Congratulations to Shred Fitness. There is a ribbon cutting held on February 28th and very excited to welcome you to town. And we are still waiting to get information from Bennys when they will be doing ribbon cutting. So with that, that was pretty quick, Sean. Yeah. So there, I didn't go through everything in the report, but if folks want to go and read it, you can always get it online. It's on our website or you can have it delivered to your email by signing up for subscriptions.
If you sign up for the First Selectwoman's Report, there is no such thing as Sims boring anymore. You will be booked. That's one thing, so.
And you might get through it by the travel ban.
Yeah, and you have plenty of time to read it tomorrow. Okay. So we will now move on to action items. As you recalled during our budget process, we did review the water pollution control budget at that time, but because of snow, they actually were not able to vote on it in time for our meeting, but they have since voted on it and we have a couple of motions for you. Sean, are there any changes that they did that we should be aware of?
I think it's not, I think I'll find the submission here. One, uh, one small change to one of their equipment lineups, but otherwise this is not a budget.
Okay, are there any questions on the water pollution control budget for Sean? So we just need a couple of quick motions there.
So I make a motion to approve the Water Pollution Control 2017, 2018 operating budget in the amount of $3,353,972.
I second.
Any further discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
I make a motion to approve the following projects to be included with the previously approved fiscal year 18 capital improvement program approved by the Board of Selectmen on March 7th, 2017. The 36 Drake Hill Road dike analysis for $75,000, phosphorus removal analysis for $150,000, Hayes Road pump station upgrade, $45,000, the Terrifield area sewer repairs for $100,000, and the water pollution control plan update for $100,000.
I second.
Any further discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. We'll go on to the small cities. You have, thank you for everyone who came and spoke to this issue and thank you to Ed and Tom and Ms. Wagner for all your work on this. You are right, it is a tremendous amount of work, but it is a way that we can help assist the Housing Authority and we're very excited to do so. May I have a motion to approve the attached resolution authorizing the First Selectwoman to file an application with the state of Connecticut in order to obtain a Small Cities Community Development Program grant for the renovation and repair of the property owned by the Simsbury Housing Authority in the amount of $800,000. The resolution must be read into the record beginning with the whereas clauses.
I'll move that. Whereas, whereas federal monies are available under the Connecticut Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Program administered by the State of Connecticut Department of Housing pursuant to public law 93-383 as amended and whereas pursuant to Chapter 127(c) and Part 6 of the Chapter 130 of the Connecticut General Statutes, the Commissioner of Housing is authorized to disburse such federal monies to local municipalities and whereas it is desirable and in the public interest that the town of Simsbury make application to the state for $800,000 in order to undertake a Small Cities Community Development Program and to execute an assistance agreement therefore should one be offered. Do we need?
Yep, keep going.
Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Selectmen, one, that it is cognizant of the conditions and prerequisites for state assistance imposed by Part 6 of Chapter 130 of the Connecticut General Statutes, and two, that the filing of an application by the town of Simsbury in an amount not to exceed $800,000 is hereby approved and that the First Selectman is hereby authorized and directed to file such application with the Commissioner of the Department of Housing, to provide such additional information, to execute such other documents as may be required by the Commissioner, to execute an assistance agreement with the state of Connecticut for state financial assistance if such an agreement is offered, to execute any amendments, rescissions, and revisions thereto, to carry out approved activities, and to act as the authorized representative of the town of Simsbury.
I have a second. I will second.
Any further discussion?
Just say, as the Chairwoman of the Superactive Welfare Committee, we heartily endorse said application.
Thank you. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Thank you and congratulations and Tom, we're all buying your lunch because we've got a lot of work ahead. All right, so congratulations. We'll move on to possible action in adopting a new chapter 157 water shortages. We've had the opportunity to hear from the public, from Mr. Rieger, from Mr. De Crescenzo. I did want to say, Mr. De Crescenzo unfortunately had to be at another meeting, so he is not here for this part of the discussion, but I open it up to discussion from members of the board.
I'm sorry.
Okay, Mike.
Um, I apologize I missed the last hearing, although I read the minutes. I am still concerned where I believe this potential, uh, legislation will be taking the town and I'm also uncomfortable. I feel that we as the Board of Selectmen should be making our decisions in consultation with some other folks, but it's really our decision. And maybe I'm a little bit jaded with what's going on at the state level, but I want us to make our decision and we're not going to fly in the face of what the state does, but I want it to be our decision and not whatever the state decides is in our best interest at this particular time. So I do have some concerns about the way it is written now.
But the concept you support for that reason?
I think we need to be judicious in how we protect the water, but at the same point, we have to be respectful of other people's rights and while conceptually the, at home I have my own well, even though I paid to have the Aquarian come by my house in the event I do need them down the road, within reason, I want the ability to be both responsible and accountable for my own well, but I understand that it's not just my water.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this?
I, oh, sorry. I, I think just my own family home is on Aquarian, but we have a home in another area that is on a well and wells have a very, anyone who's had a well run dry knows that there is a accountability standard that greets you rapidly under that standard. It's not a perfect solution. The information that we have for enforcement is limited, which really does get dicey, but I think just the passage will kind of raise awareness in people of the kind of global situation we have. Our situation with water now is not what it was 40 years ago or even 30 years ago. I know, I'm sure people who were here then remember when a lot of the wells were turned over to town water based on contamination from the tobacco fields. So, um, you know, water is a, not an infinite resource for anyone, be they on well or public water, and I do think the ordinance heightens our awareness of that fact.
Thank you. Chris.
I support the ordinance as well. I actually think we've had a fairly extensive discussion on this where a lot of very legitimate concerns were expressed and I think the, the ordinance that is in front of us has navigated very successfully through all of those legitimate concerns. The fact is, the state legislation basically says that at some threshold, the state may call for a water emergency, but up to that point, it is at our discretion to be able to manage it. And I think what's interesting, if you look at how hard this discussion has been for this ordinance, imagine what happens if we do reach a point where we have to do something and we try to figure out what's the most thoughtful way of doing it. I actually think it's really healthy that we basically scenario planned our way through all of these questions and came up with a structure that I think is very well-balanced to be able to address the needs, but in a way that really isn't too obtrusive. So for that reason, I'm very supportive of the ordinance. I think it does take what's under our control and we've thought through the best model of being able to manage something if we have to. We've done it in a way that is really not obtrusive, but does answer all the structured questions you do have to answer. Who is this going to apply for? What will be the circumstances that we're going to ask people to respond to? When do we treat well water separate from our water company? So I think this has been very well presented in light of a lot of pretty extensive discussions. It clearly is not something we have to do. So if you're a believer that you should only have an ordinance when there's an actual requirement of something to have an ordinance, then I guess you don't support this. I happen to believe that it's reflective of some people being fairly forthoughtful and proactive and putting something in place that basically is going to be dormant until we have an issue. And then when we do, we don't have to go through these conversations, we don't have to have a lot of interactions with the town attorney, we don't need to worry about how we balance all of the needs. We've already answered it through this, this really model ordinance. So I am supportive of it. I actually think it's really well-designed for what have been very legitimate concerns that people have expressed. So, you know, to me, it's, it's a very well-designed ordinance that I'm supporting.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'd like to, sure. I, while I, while I agree with you, there has been a lot of good collaboration and I applaud the Conservation Commission for bringing this to our attention. I still have concerns about some of the drafting. I'm sorry, Mr. De Crescenzo isn't here, but in addition to what the public has said tonight, I fielded a couple of phone calls and some residents have expressed a desire to have a voluntary period of conservation measures put into effect before we would enact such an ordinance as this and would like that reflected in the language of the ordinance. I, I would agree with them that I think that we have to give people a chance to conserve under a plan. We heard several references tonight to a drought management plan. Is there such a thing?
So we would, as I understand it, in this situation, well, right now, our plan is to advise residents through the First Selectwoman's Report that there is a drought and encourage voluntary conservation. This board may at different levels say, hey, wait a minute, this is escalating, let's look at these things, let's try these voluntary measures in consultation with, you know, our experts within town. Mike Litten, Conservation Commission, Public Works, our county engineer, Conservation Commission, I'm sure would give us suggestions and stuff like that. So you would have the, the only thing I guess I would say is the ordinance is not mandatory. You can use it if you feel you need it. You never have, you're never obligated to use it.
Um, yeah, I understand that, but the fact of its existence implies that we would use it and should we need to. And I think as Mike mentioned, there are still, in the line, there are still questions regarding enforcement and its use against our, our business owners, which I have some concerns about. I'm, I'm not saying that I object to the ordinance, I'm saying I'm not ready and I'm sorry about that because I know some people have strong feelings one way or the other here. I would prefer if we could table this for some drafting changes and maybe two of us selecting could get together and go over that without involving all those other commissions again, but I'm not ready.
Sean, we haven't heard from you. Do you have any comments?
I certainly do. So as I think I stated before, I mean, I object to the entire premise of this. I think we're operating under a presumption of I'm not, but it sounds like we feel the need to police our residents and presume that they don't know how to conserve water on their own and we need to send the police department out and find them because they don't listen to the news or listen to the state and aren't smart enough to conserve water on their own. And as Elaine pointed out, I'm not going to water my lawn if my well's going to go dry. And I think our residents are extremely intelligent in this community and I have a fundamental problem with government overreach and this can be a reach of government overreach. We're going to pass an ordinance that, and I know my fellow selecting members have stated, you know, we cannot or we can or at the time, we're going to pass an ordinance- you know, we cannot, or we can, or at the time, we're going to pass an ordinance that says, we can send the cops to your house to write you a ticket for using water, we can send the cops into your business and write you a ticket, because if you put a glass of water on somebody's table, I think that's ridiculous. I think it's absolutely ridiculous that we're operating on the presumption to fine our residents, and in no way can I support this ordinance. Now, I am very much in favor of water, I'm very much in favor of the alarm, but I'm against government overreach, and I'm very much against presuming that our residents don't know how to do the right thing.
Elaine, this ordinance doesn't kick in until we've declared a certain state of emergency, though. This is not everybody, you know, some draconian crackdown on the, you know, on the spur of the moment. It would take that -- my concern is, if we reach that level of emergency, are we back at reboot, and it takes months and months, when we are at a level of emergency where people really need to take matter seriously in terms of water usage? And I'm not just making excuses for my brown lawn, but I do think that we need to be ready to act should the emergency kick in, which I think was the point, to Chris's point.
Yeah. And Chris, I don't disagree with you on that, I just think that we should incorporate, as a matter of policy, voluntary conservation measures. And if that means even telling people, yes, we think you should only water your lawn between the hours of 6:00 a.m. and 8:00 a.m., and yes, we think that you should -- and letting a period of voluntary conservation expire, you know, if we say, after 30 days, if there still appears to be a drought emergency, and then we would impose these, I'm just not comfortable with having this be the first step.
Chris?
So every intent, and every time we've talked about this, you know, Cheryl, your point, it's been understood that this would occur on top of what would be a voluntary time period, and informal communication, and trying to get the community behind conservation. So if -- so I'm very confident that this ordinance is not in conflict with that, and if what you're saying is some additional changes to wording would get you over the hump of being uncomfortable with that, I'm totally supportive of that. The other thing I would point out is, I do understand the, you know, Sean, to your point, a lot of times you look at these ordinances and go, you know, this gets ridiculous, because we're actually now, we're putting, you know, putting eyes, you know, crossing Ts and dining Is, talking about exactly how we're going to have a police officer or someone go out to enforce something. So the concept that we're going to send the police out to enforce if people don't wash their car, I completely get that there's a certain absurdity to that, but the fact is, with every single ordinance we do, that does have some requirement of enforcement, we do get into that absurdity. So we have a fire hydrant ordinance that defines when we would enforce, if we need to, with the understanding that that's going to be a very rare exception. We also have a sidewalk ordinance that does the same. We have an underground tank ordinance that, again, we expect most people are going to manage their underground tanks the right way, but we have enforcement. We have all sorts of animal control, we have some animal control ordinances, where we expect most people are going to be reasonable, and if their animal is causing a problem, and someone informally reaches out to them, or if the town informally reaches out, they're going to do the right thing, but there's, you know, a level where if there needs to be something further, we do it. So the fact is, every ordinance that ultimately may require some type of enforcement has the definition of it, and I would advocate that's one of the most valuable things of doing these ordinances, that we don't have a problem, and then have a huge debate in the middle of a situation as to how to manage it, because we have thoughtfully figured out how to balance it. So I'm receptive to allowing some kind of further refinement to make sure that everyone's comfortable, that we're not going to impinge upon or infringe upon the voluntary part, but I also would ask that people would also reconsider that, that yes, an ordinance is going to have some enforcement piece to it, but that is part and parcel of every ordinance that we do.
Chris, I mean, I agree with you on the premise of what you're talking about with the ordinances. My challenge here is, is when somebody doesn't shovel their fire hydrant, somebody's house could burn down, and somebody could die. And I think that's a slightly --
Are you guilty to me about tomorrow?
No, but it's a different situation than walking into Plan B and taking the lieutenant with us and saying, here's a $300 ticket, because you just gave Chris Kelly a glass of water. Those are two very, very different scenarios here, and that's, again, I know I keep harping on that, but it -- I know we don't have to use it, but it gives us the power to do so. And if we say we're never going to use it, then why are we giving us the power to do so? Take it out of the ordinance.
Are we saying we're never going to use it? Or only going to use it in emergency?
I'm not done speaking.
Sorry, sweetie.
The other thing, I mean, we're going to find people for washing their cars, we're going to have residents calling each other, saying, I think the ordinance should be in place, because there's a drought emergency. And we're going to have people in here screaming at us over $50 fines and over usage of the police department. This is not going to be without debate, and this is not going to be just, we say, all right, it's in place, we're going to have this, I mean, there's going to be more to it than I think you're simplifying, Chris, from, when do we do it? Are we even experts and can declare this? You know, we're going to be asked to make that decision, and again, back to what I said originally, are we even, do we even have the capacity to do that? Are we the right place for that? You know, I know we can bring in other folks, but this isn't just as simple as, you know, shovel your hydrant and go back to your day. This is a lot more complex. We're talking about entering personal and private property to fine. We're talking about having police officers walk down people's driveways and, you know, hold them accountable for having a bucket that's four gallons as opposed to three gallons. You know, this is not as simple as I think we're making it out to be. And again, I think, you know, the road of best intentions is paved with bad ideas, and this is a bad idea in my mind.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
I'd just like to say that access to adequate water supply is as much of a public good as access to the fire hydrant, as much as it seems convoluted. You know, when your sink starts putting muddy water out of the faucet, it's kind of a bad deal, and that affects people more regularly, even than the roll of the dice of whose house has a fire emergency. So I do think, you know, our water supply is a public good, just as much as fire safety, public safety, and sidewalk accessibility. No, should it be triggered nonstop? No, that's a little draconian, but I get that point, but that we're saying, in the case where we declare an emergency. I think it's a very valid thing for us to consider.
Is there any other comments? Mike?
Thank you, everybody, for your comments. I think, at this point, I'm not ready to support this going forward. I would like to see us put in some voluntary steps, thresholds, ideas, before we get to, as part of this ordinance, as opposed to saying, well, down the road, we're going to do this, because I heard Elaine say, and it's a very good point, that this should be in place prior to us needing it, because if it's not, we've set ourselves up not to succeed, let's put it that way. But the way it was presented, and what we have in front of us now, I'm not ready to support.
Chris?
So, I mean, I'd be happy to work on a subcommittee with, it sounds like there's receptivity to this, you know, at least from a number of people. If we can put some language changes in that address some of these concerns, I'm confident we could. I'd be willing, you know, in addition to anyone else, to work with the group to do so.
I'd jump in there, too, Chris. Maybe not in the same pool, but I'd get in.
Don't waste your water in a pool.
So as of right now, I am in support of this ordinance, and I appreciate the members of Conservation Commission who are here, and appreciate all the hard work you did on that, because I know it was a lot of work. But I also appreciate the concerns raised here, and so I don't have an objection in incorporating some of Cheryl's concerns in the ordinance. And I think we're awfully close, and we can get this to a threshold where at least five of the members can be supportive of it. I will say that water is one of the fundamentals of life, so when it is in danger, I view that as a huge public emergency, not a little one. And I also don't think that we put this in place unless there is a level of emergency. We do like what we're doing right now, we're letting people know that there is a drought statewide, and asking them to take voluntary measures. We would never institute this policy at this moment in time. I think that in terms of who should be decided, well, we were elected by the people of the town of Simsbury, given their trust to make these hard decisions, and to say, to know when we need to get expert advice to assist us with those decisions. Like, we go to council all the time, we get experts all the time if we feel that we need additional information or advice. So I think the public has entrusted us to make the judgment, when do we need to go out and get experts to assist, and when can we do it on our own? So I'm comfortable with that, because I think that's what democracy is. But since we clearly don't have the votes to pass this right now, and we do have a consensus, it seems, or a near consensus, to at least try to work it to a point where we feel more comfortable with the final presentation, and as the changes are minor, and I don't think that they are going to require conservation input from their technical expertise, these are more process issues, that it would be appropriate. We do have two volunteers, Chris and Mike, to take a look at it. I would like to be involved in some, we just haven't had an open space, but I don't have to be on the committee, but I may come to your meetings.
So close, Chris.
But I may come to your meetings, so if you could just keep me appraised of those, to the extent I can. So with that, may I have a motion to refer the ordinance to a subcommittee made up of Mike Payne and Chris Kelly?
Second?
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
I oppose.
Will the record, please, can you please list the names of those who voted for and the one who voted against by name? Thank you. Okay, we are then moving on to approved tax refunds. May I have a motion to approve tax refunds in the amount of $4,354.84?
Second?
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. We have, I think I saw Rick. Did I say Rick? Oh, there we go. Okay. We have before you, the board has a request to approve the software license agreement provided in the submission that will provide the town clerk's office, Granby Town Hall, with a software database to enter, issue track and report absentee voter ballots to SOTS, Simsbury registrars, and election moderators. The agreement has been reviewed by, and approved by council, and the financial impact of the town of Simsbury is $1 U.S. dollar. This is a database that was actually created by the town of Simsbury and Rick, right?
Yeah, it was created in 2000.
And so, can you just put it in English for us, what it is you're asking?
It's a simple access database, Microsoft Access Database, that we developed in-house back in 2000, to help streamline the internal process of the town clerks and absentee ballots. This year, it helped them greatly, they saw a huge uptick in voter, you know, absentee ballots. So it's really from an internal mechanism that they use it. Currently, right now, there's other towns that are looking for it, like Granby, and this is the first, Karen in Granby, she's the first one to come up and said, you know, could we borrow it, or take it? And I said, sure, it's just an access database. The only contingency on it is that they have to buy licensed software for it, and they understand that. And that, once we bring it over to them, it's pretty much, you know, hands-free, and they have to take care of it at their point.
So there would be a cost of a dollar, because it's a contract, so you just need our legal requirements, but actually, it does have to be a dollar exchange, you can't do it for free. I'll open it up for questions.
Just to be clear, you're not going to be providing technical support to Granby for this?
No. We could, for about $150, however.
I was going to say that. Me and you.
We probably like to.
That's where I'm going with this.
Sean wants to give -- you're a senior consultant. Is there any connection to our network and their network? Does it result in this?
No. We actually will cut it to a CD, report it to them.
I assume somebody just wanted to make sure, given our cyber discussion previously.
Actually, it will be scanned both ways.
Perfect.
Is this a one-time license, or are you going to have to do this every year, or every time you modify it?
It's a one-time. Where it is right now, it's very useful for Simsbury Town Clerk Office, and that's why they want it now, where it is. They saw the uptick in the absentee action last year, and that's why they needed something. At the state level, they're still working on that type of process, so I think in a couple of years, the state will have something coming down the pipe that they'll be able to take it all in line.
Any other questions for Rick?
Okay.
May I have a motion to approve the software license agreement with the town of Granby contained in your submissions?
I'll move.
I will go with Sean on the second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. We have before you a motion to approve a request for supplemental funding by the Simsbury Volunteer Ambulances Association, the amount of $80,000. This is, the request is coming to us at the recommendation of the Public Safety Committee due to an increase in call volume, which has indicated the need for implementation of a second ambulance during weekday hours. There has also been a need for paid staffing of the primary ambulance during weekday hours due to lack of volunteers. The revenue resulting from these increased call volume has not fully covered the expenses associated with these staffing changes. So this would be to almost partially fund part of an ambulance. You do have, before you, a memo written by Melissa Appleby, who actually did an analysis for the town of Greenwich, who was in a similar situation. So the reason why I'm bringing this to you is because we're still in the middle of budget process, and I, as you know, I was not able to put this in our operating budget, or in our capital budget. So the recommendation for the first year would be to make a one-time expenditure using the Section 809(c) of the Town Charter, which allows us to do that mid-year upon the recommendation of the Board of Selectmen and approval of the Board of Finance, and then to do a further in-depth study that, and you'll see in Melissa's memo, what that study would be, so that we can come up with a long-term solution. And it would be an operational assessment, would include an analysis of call volume workload, including projected trends, staffing model, use of both volunteers and paid staff, response times as compared with acceptable standards, mutual aid, capacity of our partners to provide supplemental service. Per the request of the Board of Finance, the analysis would also include consideration of alternative service delivery models, i.e. private EMS providers. As you'll recall, when the police department made their recommendation for an additional dispatch, they looked at alternatives and compared price versus quality before they made a recommendation. So that's just part of our financial obligations that we have as fiscal stewards of the town of Simsbury, to evaluate all options, even if we end up at the same conclusion. And this process, we think, would take about six months, and Melissa is here. Did you want to speak to this at all?
No, I think that some of the covers, and I think what a study like this would do is look at what I would call the current state, and what are the calls for service, what is our response time, and what level of service do we want to provide, and then what resources are necessary to provide that level of service, both in terms of, you know, staff costs, other operational costs, even capital, sort of taking a broad perspective of what the current state is, and, you know, potentially trends, where we're headed in terms of call volume. As you'll see in the packet, there's, you know, it clearly demonstrates that call volume's going up, so trying to unpack that a little bit, and seeing if there's any detail we can pull out to try to project where we're headed to in terms of service level.
And then we give the Board options, because there are ways we can support the ambulance, both either in operating or capital, if you do capital, do they need as much reserves? So those are the kind of analysis we do. It does take a long time, we were just not able to do it with the government's budget, and we just got Melissa in, like, two weeks ago, so we're down staff as well.
So this existing $80,000, we don't, where would that?
So that would come out of reserves, out of the excess funds, that would be a one-time transfer. We, you know, the question is, is there a need now? So that's the first determination this Board makes. And then if there's a need now, do we want to meet it now, for forever going forward, to do a one-time thing, and then do a long-term analysis? My recommendation is that we meet the need now, but then commit to doing a long-term analysis and incorporating it for the next budget season. It's simply not possible to do that analysis, although we appreciate Mike reaching out to us, and working with us, and giving us the information we need, but, you know, our due diligence is a little different, especially if we're going to be making, really, forever.
Yeah, absolutely, I would agree, and Chris was chairing the Public Safety Meeting when this was originally brought up, but obviously, all of us took a look at this, and Melissa, I think this is a really intelligent solution, because we're very lucky in this community. For our entire existence, we have paid this much for the call volume. I know we've contributed a little bit of capital on a one-time basis, but this community does not pay anything for the exemplary ambulance service that we receive today, and given the explosion, I'll call it, in the call volume, just in the last 10 to 12 years, is really a staggering exhibit of how lucky we are, that we haven't had to, and the level of service of both professionals and the volunteers we have. While $80,000 is certainly a substantial amount of money, in the grand scheme of the service and the capacity we're getting, it's certainly a deal from that standpoint, and I think this one-time transfer is -- And I think this one-time transfer is exactly what our transfer authorities are for, and your recommendation, and Melissa's, to study this and make sure that we're doing it in an appropriate, sustainable, you know, form, whether, again, as we talked about, whether it is capital and helping with the purchase of additional ambulances throughout the years, because that is a significant expenditure, you know, or is it the acquisition of supplies, or is it continuing to supplement the operating budget? There's a lot of ways we can go and make this work, not only for the ambulance folks, but also for the community. And again, this is obviously one of our core responsibilities, is to make sure that when our folks call 911, the ambulance is getting there. And with the changes, you know, in UConn and other things, and we heard a really lengthy and, I think, excellent presentation from the lieutenant on our dispatch challenges, and one of their challenges is having to find mutual aid. And fully, fully funding a second ambulance would hopefully help that as well as we would have the two vehicles to respond on a more frequent basis. So thank you for bringing this forward. I think it's, I think it's a really intelligent solution, so I am very much in support of this.
Chris?
I think Sean stated it well. I also do like the idea of this expenditure, as well as the long-term study. The only thing I'll add is actually not unprecedented for us to provide some support, because at one point, the town did pay for paramedic services through UConn Medical Center at one point. So it's not totally without precedent. So I support the motion.
But they always say, the call volume right now, the way the ambulance gets reimbursed is they take someone to the hospital, apply to the insurance, and they get reimbursed, and that covers a lot of their funds. But the call volume is not such that they can do as, it's not the full need of an ambulance, so they're not getting the reimbursement they need for the full cost. So as call volumes increase, actually, they're funding from reimbursements increases. So there is a path out of it. I mean, good or bad, we do know our population trends are likely to, and the call volume is going to go up, so eventually, those numbers actually could come down. Mike, did you want to speak to this at all?
You've done so well. I have one page of quote-unire ahead, but I think, yeah. I think Sean.
Good, very conversation.
No, I just want to express my appreciation to not only this group, but every other agency in the town throughout this process. It's been very gratifying. And I just say that this is our 60th anniversary of operation this year, and it's the context of this request, that we've never had to do this before, but the dynamics of the town have changed, and the board will refill if necessary.
Well, thank you, and thank you for coming tonight. We appreciate that, because we know you're going to have a busy day tomorrow.
Yes, and if I might add, you know, we will, as of 6 o'clock tomorrow morning, for the next 24 hours, have double staffing, two ALS ambulances on throughout, and the paramedic available, and a separate response vehicle. So we don't expect an increase in number of calls, but what we find in a situation like that, the calls take so much longer.
Right.
That the primary ambulance is not a service for double or triple in about normal amount of time. And thank you all very much.
And thanks to all our first responders and public works, workers who are going to be out working, you know, we appreciate all you do. All right, with that, may I have a motion to approve and recommend to the Board of Finance a supplemental appropriation in accordance with Section 809(c) of the town charter in the amount of $80,000 for the Sinsbury Volunteer Ambulance Association?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. I will go on to approve the registrar of voters' redistricting. I'm pleased to have Michelle and Karen with us. Thank you for being here on this night before the big storm. We know that this is a big deal for you to do this, and we appreciate all the work you did in preparation for this. This is a joint request from the Democrat and Republican registrar of voters to approve redistricting of electors on streets listed in the attached summary. I do want to point out that in Sinsbury, this is not gerrymandering, because we're all elected at large, so it doesn't benefit any one party or any one individual to do the redistricting, because we all get our votes from the whole town. So there's no gerrymandering, just let me take that off the table right away. The town's voter enrollment has increased by approximately 2,000 voters in the last two years, affecting districts disproportionately. In order to avoid opening a fifth polling place location, the registrar of voters have worked together to identify neighborhoods to redistrict to better balance enrollment numbers. Special consideration was given to polling location, parking and street access. And again, I'll just, for the record, this is not gerrymandering of any kind. This is very, as a whole, is treated as one district. So I'll open it up to Michelle and Karen to talk us through this. Do you have anything you want to say?
Do you have any questions about the memo or proposal?
So I actually do.
Yeah.
And I agree, not gerrymandering and not applying that, but in the event that we do get redistricted from the state level, and given that it's coming up, and the 16th could become the 16th and a half, is there any concern with disproportionate representation in any of these districts? For instance, if Bloomfield.
Can you give an example? Because at this moment, I do not have any concerns about that, but.
We don't know what the state's going to do when they, when they redistrict all the representative districts. And is there any concern that as a result of this, or maybe this is something.
I do not currently have a concern about it. It's my understanding that Sinsbury's population hovering at about 23,500 is the idea, and I don't know if John's still here to give you this, but.
We're ready to ask.
That we're right, we're kind of in that sweet spot for the number of electors to be, or voter residents to be represented, represented in a house district. So I don't have any terrific concern that we were to, that we would be redistricted on a state level. If that were to happen, we would just have to go back to the drawing board and redo these, because this is, this is really answering an immediate need we have. We cannot continue to operate Latimer Lane as a polling location with the number of voters that are registered there, and we need to do something about this.
It's a very minor, actually, redistribution of three neighborhoods that are now currently not voting at the school they're children attend, and we're just bringing those districts kind of in line so that by, but because by doing this shift, we will reduce the numbers dramatically at Latimer Lane and make Henry James the larger district, where we have a better traffic flow, better parking situation. It's a minor tweaking of three neighborhoods.
So my follow-up question is, so I assume there's going to be some fairly substantial modification. Is there any concern, or do you have any understanding of when this has changed? I mean, does it change turnout numbers, because people are frustrated, they go to their own location, get turned away, and then don't end up voting?
Our plan would be to contact each elector by registered mail, and I separately intend to order, you know, for instance, as we did with the storm in 2011, where we, on very short notice, needed to notify a lot of people that had no access to mail or telephones that we were changing their polling location. We plumped signs in their neighborhoods, and so, you know, all voters voting at Henry James, I plan on doing the same for the November election.
Excellent, thank you.
And have you had any feedback from the state on, I know actually, one of the bigger things in 2015 was that people were looking up, where do I go to vote locally? And they got the budget referendum location. I was standing in.
That would be.
I was at Henry James most of the day.
That would be handled through the redistricting process in the system, that all of those streets would be reassigned in the computer system, so if anybody were to look up, where do I vote, it would direct them to their location.
Well, good. I know that none of that was on you guys. I know that was all.
And none of this would take place until after the budget referendum.
Yeah.
We're not.
Yeah, no, I know the secretary of state's office is the one that fumbled in 2015 on where to vote for your local people. So.
Are there any other questions?
One comment. If, if we're going to wait till after the budget referendum, at the budget referendum, let's hand out the sheet to those people.
Okay.
You can't tell them enough, so.
Or at least have signs up. That's a good idea.
While they're standing there, ready to vote, I'd as well say, next time you vote, add.
But just so that members of the public who may not have the submission in front of them, the recommendation is moving from Latimer to Tooton, 650 voters, Nylas Way, August Road, Laddy Lane, Neil Drive, Ardsley Way, George Street, Fernwood Drive, Maureen Drive, Bushy Hill Lane, West Mary, Joyce Lane, Westridge, Pine Crest, and Bushy Hill Road, odd numbers, Canton Road 244. Moving from Latimer Lane to Henry James, 300 voters, that would be West Street, Maple Court, Old Mill Court, Miller's Lane, Miller's Way, Old Mill Lane, Mill Pond, and Sawyer's Path. And then moving from Henry James to Terrifield would be 200 voters, Westwood Drive, Barnard Drive, Westminster Cartway, and 995 Hot Meadow Street.
It's Westminster, yes. What did I say?
No, 995 Hot Meadow.
Hot Meadow.
Is the Westminster residential area, but I might be wrong. Yes, just for people's information.
All right, are there any other questions? May I have a motion to approve the redistricting of electors on streets listed in your attached summary?
So moved.
Any further discussion? All in favor, the motion carries unanimously. All in favor? The motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Now, is that your unanimous? Sorry.
You have before you a request to review and discuss the waiver of fees for the Sinsbury Light Opera Company event at Eno Memorial Hall. The Sinsbury Light Opera Company has requested that the Board of Selectmen waive the use fees for Eno Hall for their reserve dates in March and April. The waiver does not include town custodial staff during reserve times, and they will still pay for that. The reserve dates are March 26 through the 31st, April 1 through 2, and April 8 and 9. Is there anyone here from the Sinsbury Light Opera Company?
Tim Colby, president. Good evening. Yeah, pardon me, I've never spoken at one of these before. We do respectfully request that, as in years past, the Board waive the usage fees. We have always covered the overtime with custodial staff, and we continue to do that.
And what is the name of the show?
We are performing Gilbert and Sullivan's Islande this year. Hope to see everybody in town come out and see the show.
Thank you, and thank you for coming before us. Are there any questions?
I would just ask this board to reconsider once again, as we do one of these.
I know where you're going.
A policy with regard to town performance groups and the requirement of meetings. Sometimes they have a performance.
So I can ask that Mr. Roy work with Mr. Cook on adopting a new policy so that we can perhaps.
Much as we appreciate seeing you and, and, you know, giving you a chance to, to tell us what you're performing, I'm sure you probably have other things you could do with your time.
I can definitely speak on behalf of the other theater groups in town, as we've all discussed this every year, and yes, we make it much easier.
So we'll, we'll ask Tom, the two Toms, to work on this and come up with a proposal for the board. It will probably be, probably in May, just because of the budget stuff, but there June, so we'll try and get that through to you.
It would be nice if, if it still gets announced at our meetings, because I personally mark my calendar every time the theater groups come in, so I know who's doing what when.
Our first election will include it in her.
Yes, the first one. Yeah, and Sean will.
So if you remind me, I will actually put in the first election report. And also, I do encourage you, before your events, to come and speak to public audience and let the public know what you're doing, because, believe it or not, some people watch this. So it's a good way to get out information.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
And you can come in costume, and that would be awesome. All right, yes. May I have a motion to waive the fees of the Sinsbury Light Opera Company excluding custodial fees for March 26 through 31?
So moved.
Oops, hold it. April 1 and 2, and April 8 and 9.
I still move that one too.
All second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Good evening. Good work with the show.
You have before you a motion to accept a donation of $4,822.80 from Stop &amp; Shop for the Feed a Friend program at Social Services. Is there anyone here from Stop &amp; Shop? All right, so with our thanks, these funds support Sinsbury's Cheese Day program and our food closet, and go to our residents in need of assistance. So we are very grateful for their community's support of this project. Offer our thanks, we'll have Mickey write a thank you note to them on behalf of the board. May I have a motion to accept with our thanks a donation of $4,822.80 from Stop &amp; Shop for the Feed a Friend program?
So moved with much gratitude.
Second.
Okay, all, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. You have before you, in connection with the town of Sinsbury's commitment to nondiscrimination and in recognition of April as the Fair Housing Month, this board is being asked to, one, adopt, and, two, authorize the first election to execute and reissue the following policies prohibiting discriminatory practices, which also provide procedure for enforcement. These are policies we've had in place. This would just be a reissuance to assist with our Small Cities Grant. Those policies would be the Fair Housing Resolution, the Fair Housing Policy Statement, Title VI Equal Opportunity Statement, the Affirmative Action Policy Statement, ADA Notice, and Municipal Grievance Procedures. Does anyone have any questions about these? You have seen them. I'm trying to remember whether, Tom, do these all need to be read, or is?
No, they do not need to be read.
So moved then.
So the motion would be for Kathy to adopt and authorize the first election to execute reissued the following policies prohibiting discriminating practices, and which also provide procedures for enforcement. So we have a motion by Mr. Askam and a second by Mr. Payne. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everyone. You have before you a motion to appoint real estate firms to represent the town of Sinsbury and its real estate transactions for a period ending January 31, 2019. The request is to appoint the following real estate firms: Caldwell Banker Residential Brokerage, Mora Hammack, Berkshire Hathaway Home Services, Sandy Fine, Remax Communities, Charlie Kaler, CBRE New England, John McCormick. On January 23 of this year, the town of Sinsbury issued a request for proposals seeking up to four real estate firms to represent the town in real estate transactions, including but not limited to the sale of properties owned by the town as a result of tax foreclosure. All four of the firms, before you meet the requirements, including the assurances of the absence of conflicts of interest. So you'll recall, sometimes, from time to time, the town has to buy or sell property, and this would give us pre-approved agents that we could use, having gone through an RFP and consultation. Now, it's, Tom, do you have anything to add about the process?
No, I think, again, the goal is we'll rotate these four. We've found three of our respondents for this are Sinsbury-based firms that have been doing this work for a long time and have a good knowledge of our residential property issues. The CBRE application was a little, a little bit different, but to the extent we run into situations where we needed advice or representation on a large-scale commercial venture, they would be very helpful. So I would, I'm recommending those four of the six responses we got.
Any questions for Mr. Cook?
Nope.
I'll go with Mr. Payne and then Elaine.
Sorry about that. Is there a reason that we're going to January of 2019?
It was to, basically, it was about, it was going to be a two-year deal.
Okay.
That was the theory. And then, you know, we need to sunset it at some point.
No, that's fine. Thank you.
And just, and I just wanted to clarify, based on what you were saying, the one non-Sinsbury business is one that specializes in an area that.
That's correct, and it does extensive, as we all know that they were involved, of course, in the Hartford property sale.
Because I think we like using our local business owners, but I understand.
Exactly.
The specialty is something different. Thank you.
And one of these firms, actually, I think it's Berkshire Hathaway included in their proposal of a partnership with Rich Korea in the event that we needed commercial assistance too. So I think we're well-covered. But to the extent we were all of a sudden facing a massive commercial property issue here, I thought it made sense for us to have somebody with an international, or national and international scope.
With the exception of CBRE, your plan is to rotate them evenly?
That's correct.
When the need arises?
Yes.
All right, with that, may I have a motion to appoint the following real estate firms to represent the town of Sinsbury and its real estate transactions for a period ending January 31, 2019: Caldwell Banker Residential Brokerage, Mora Hammack, Berkshire Hathaway Home Services, Sandy Fine, Remax Communities, Charlie Kaler, and CBRE New England, John McCormick.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. We'll go on to appointments and resignations. Before you, a motion to accept the resignation of Derek Peterson as a member of the zoning commission, with our thanks.
So moved.
Second. I will go with Sean. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Before you are motions to appoint, to the zoning commission and the Economic Development Commission, to the zoning commission to appoint Michael Doyle of 48 Sunset Hill as a regular member. May I have a motion to appoint Mr. Doyle to the zoning commission?
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Before you is a motion to appoint Evelyn M. Golden, 43 Pine Glen, as a regular member of the Economic Development Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. May I have a motion to appoint Maura A. Fitzgerald Macachi, how's that? Help me out, guys. Of 27 Castlewood Road, to the EDC.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. May I have a motion to appoint Mark Brady of 144 and a half, Firetown Road, as a regular member of the Economic Development Commission?
So moved.
Again, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Thank you for your service to the town, we appreciate that. We have before you the regular meeting minutes of February 27, 2017. Does anyone have any changes?
I had a question.
Yeah.
Mike Delahanty, who is no longer here, was listed in here as Mike Morris. I wasn't aware he was in a program, or his name changed.
Ah, you're right, so that would be Mike Delahanty, so it's on the first page, first sentence, of hard save community designation.
Yes.
Mr. Payne is recommending the elimination of Morris and replacement of Delahanty, could you spell Delahanty?
I could try. What they said.
Is, are there any other changes?
Good catch, Mike.
Okay, so with that, may I have a motion to accept the minutes with the one change of Mike Morris to Mike Delahanty?
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Are there any selectman liaison or subcommittee reports at this time?
I just want to point out that the Personnel Subcommittee meeting scheduled for Wednesday has been canceled. We have our next meeting, thanks, yeah, we have our next, we have our next meeting next Thursday at 7:00 AM at Town Hall, so.
Okay, thank you for letting us know. Are there any other updates?
I'll just say, based on tourism, read the first selectwoman's report, if you want to know what's going on, because tons of stuff is starting to go on, so.
That's a good program.
Turn it over.
Lots of good programming at the library, so there is a lot of cool stuff going on, and it's worth checking it out.
Spring is when things start to get going, so definitely look what's going on around town.
It's a very impressive community, we're very grateful, because so many people who do this, do this as volunteers, completely and wholly. Don't just sit and complain, but they step up and make our community better, we're very grateful to them. All right, with that, may I have a motion to move into executive session pursuant to Connecticut General Statute, Section 1-200, 6D, concerning the selection of a site, or the lease, or sale, or purchase of real estate in connection with the redesign of the senior center.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. Is there any action?